Really hear you all.
You sound good, Kelly.
Okay, alright, I think that's good. So we're recording, welcome to our Wednesday, February 10th caucus work session. For the all becoming counsel JR, can you just? Actually, it's only one screen, I can do it. So, present, we have council members O'Brien. Fahey, Conti, Igo, Anani, Hoey, Farrell, Robinson, Ballerin. Along with our staff, senior legislative, Michelle Andre, research counsel JR Pichardo, city clerk, clerk of the council, Daniel Gillespie, as well as Brett Williams Corp. Council and Darius Shaw for our city treasurer is joining us also. Okay. So. Just jumping into the agenda. Actually, I mean, Darius is here, if you wanna, you wanna jump in, Darius, and just kinda take us through. What you wanna do? You're muted.
Okay, I can speak now?
Yes.
Alright. Um, I want to thank the council for, for getting this on the, on the agenda so quickly. And I, you know, anything you can do to pass it as quickly as possible would be very helpful. What happened was, you know, obviously, we get questions all the time. About late fees and waiving late fees on property taxes, it's been particularly. A lot of landlords, a lot of small landlords, two to four family landlords have been asking our office, me and others, what we can do for them to, to help ease the burden of the property taxes because they're not getting all the rents they are used to because of the no eviction order. There really isn't much in state law, however, the governor last weekend signed a bill that permitted localities to, to put off late fees on property taxes for up to four months. And so it was passed, and it was passed by the legislature, signed into law last Saturday the 30th. And when I found out about it, which was about three days before it was signed, I wanted to see what it was we could do to get it on the agenda and see if we could actually pass this. It requires passage by both the city, which is on your agenda, and the county as well, because the county is the taxing authority in Albany County for all the municipalities. The county put it on their agenda this past Monday night, and so they're working on getting that passed as well. I don't think there's any opposition, I certainly hope there's no opposition on the council. All it really does is move, essentially, the, the due date now for property taxes is going to be June 1st, if this is, if this is passed. And a lot of people's, you know, obviously, the first question is, well, if we do that, how's that gonna affect our, our cash flow, we're gonna have to get taxes in or not? And the answer is, you know, because the due date has already passed for taxes, we've received the bulk of our taxes already. And in fact, we're actually, from a cash flow perspective, we're actually ahead of last year. Because we billed the waste collection fees on the property tax bills this year, so we have an extra about $3 million in cash on hand that we waited to collect over the course of, of, of last year, because the bills went out later. So that, that has made up for what is right now about, I'm estimating about a 500,000 to 800,000. Reduction in actual taxes collected compared to last year, it's a little bit difficult because not everything's been, been input into the system yet. And. Information from last year is actually, is all caught up with this information we have for this year, it's not all caught up. But that being said, I'm not concerned about cash flow, I think we've had, actually, we've actually had a pretty good collection year. But what does seem to be happening is some of the business properties, and I just did a search here, at 1722, two to four family homes are, have only paid either half the first installment, or have not paid their taxes at all yet. Again, it's difficult for me to compare that to, to last year, because our system doesn't really do it that way. But that is a fairly significant chunk of, of the delinquent taxes right now. I think we have about. About 5,000 or so properties total that have not paid up, and 1722 of those are two to four families. You know, it's, it's pretty simple for all the. For all the phone calls that we field on a regular basis, certainly this year on the waste collection fees, adding them onto the bills. And also every year around this time of year, when, when people are unable to pay their property taxes, or ask to, you know, pay late and waive the interest, it's really making life for us a little bit easier to say, yes, we can. The only thing I do ask is that if we can, if there's any way possible to get this thing passed before the end of the month, that would make things a heck of a lot easier for us, just in telling people what to do. Because right now, we're telling people to call us next week when we find out more about what's gonna happen with the legislation. And we're, you know, we're holding on to. Tax payments right now that are technically late. And have not included their interest in the, in the, in the payment. I want to not send them back to people and just basically, you know, cash them. You know, as, as timely. Again, I, I think there's not a huge. It's not a huge revenue hit to the city, but the cash flow perspective, we're, we're doing very well right now on, on the tax collections because of the waste collection fees. And the only thing it might impact is interest that we otherwise would collect on, on late, late payments for tax bills. But we've spoken with, with Mike and, and, you know, budget, and it, it might be a 100 to $200,000 hit interest collected. But because, and partially because of the installment program that we implemented last year, we actually had a banner year last year in, in late fees collected from individuals. So we almost cracked 500,000, which was about 100. I think 30,000 more than, 170,000 more than budgeted, and more than I've ever, you know, seen here. So I think we might take a little bit of hint on the interest collected, but that's gonna be about it. So if anybody has any questions, please let me know.
Question, you say by the end of the month. Would March 1 be too late?
It wouldn't be too late, you know, we'll, we'll manage, it just administratively makes it, makes it easier for us if we, if we can get it done by the end of the month, and we can input the bills quicker, sooner rather than later, but, but if March 1 is the date that, that works for you guys, we'll, we'll make it work.
I don't know, I mean, it's only because there's a different process for local laws versus ordinances as far as. Passing on the same night as introduction, that involves some kind of an emergency message from the mayor.
Right.
I think we're general city law.
Yeah.
And that's. Go ahead, Darius, sorry.
Well, I was gonna say, whatever, you know, whatever we need to do, we'll, we'll be happy to do. I know that we're running the same thing with the county, and they're. You know, they, they have the same issues that you're bringing up, Richard, and we're trying to figure out whatever ways we can do to, to get around it. You know, do, do a public hearing as soon as possible, notice it as soon as possible, and get, get it passed as soon as possible, even if that means, you know, putting together a, a quick special, a special meeting if we have to. But, you know, the sooner the better, the, the more administratively easy it is for us and to say, to give some sort of certainty to the people who we're talking to right now.
Darius, I have a fast question. If somebody opted to do the split, pay the bill, and then they're gonna get charged the interest, because of this, will that impact that interest payment?
Yeah, it would, it would basically, if they paid before June 1st, they wouldn't have to pay interest on that second payment.
Okay, thank you, that's good news then, for it to tell.
This would also, technically, the time period has passed for people to make a first installment payment, they now would have to pay the whole thing. But if we do this, we can allow them to pay the first installment now, you know, through, through May 31st.
Thank you.
Mr. Anani?
Yeah, I just want to commend the treasurer on, you know, following up with what the state is doing and looking at what the governor recommendation is and acted so swiftly, I will say I'm definitely in support of this action, this legislation. Many of our families, you know, whether it's renters or property owners, they're all struggling, and government is here to help, you know, to help individuals help themselves. This is not a handout, this is just delaying it for until June, and I strongly want to recommend that we move as fa- as quickly as we can, and definitely support, what am I being co-sponsor on this legislation?
Thank you.
Mr. Shea?
I was just looking for that little raise hand, do that. Alright, so with regard to the second provision, that would not take effect with regard to the county tax, that would not take effect unless the county also passes.
Yeah, but they, they, they rule 11ed it for Monday night to get it on, so that takes, you know, that, that shows a great deal of, of, I think unanimous consent, if I'm not mistaken. But. Regardless, there doesn't seem to be any opposition at the county level either, to kind of work through whatever issues there might be on, on cash flow and things like that.
Thank you for doing this, I do have a, you said that we took in 500,000 in interest last year?
Nearly.
Yeah, and do you think that that was because people opted for splitting their payments? Did some people not realize that they were going to be needing to pay interest on that second payment?
There, we, we saw some of that, we did everything we could to let people know that that's, that the way it works is this way. There were, I think, about 1,100. Installment payments made, and most of them, I have to go back and look, but most of them made the second installment payment as well. I think the, the real, we, we've been more diligent in our office of trying to. You know, get out unpaid tax bills to people, correcting addresses, finding out where something has changed. And getting the bills in people's hands, I think, between the two of those things, that's really, I think you saw the, the effect last year. We had really, I, I think, when I first got here, it was about $250,000, maybe two to 250 was collected on an annual basis, and it's slowly risen to the 300s in the last few years. And to the point where now we have, we have 1,000 fewer delinquent properties every year that we turn over to the county than we did five years ago.
So this says it's, you're authorized to delay implementation of interest on delinquent 2021 city tax bills. And our, our intent is not for you to actually delay the collection of that, but to not charge any interest.
Well, what, the effect of it was essentially to delay the delinquency period to start instead of, you know, February 1st. To June 1st, and so the 4% that is charged in February right now for a delinquent tax bill would now be charged June, then 111 thereafter, so the maximum impact would be. A loss of basically 4% interest of, for the, for the four months that is delayed, and that come up, essentially would come off the back end. So when we turn over delinquent tax bill to the county. At the end of this year, instead of turning over the tax bill plus 14% in interest penalties over the course of the year, it'd be the underlying tax bill, the principal, and 10%.
Alright. Well, as we're all clear about how it's being interpreted and implemented. Alright, thank you very much. And yes, I'd like to co-sponsor too.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? Questions or comments? So. Based on what we need to do, if, if members are comfortable. As long as we get that emergency message that's required from, from the administration. We can move forward with this, everyone okay with that? Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just waiting on the message of necessity, and just as everybody procedurally wants to, we get the message of necessity, it's a super majority to pass it then, the same night.
And actually, a question if all members would like to be co-sponsors, I mean, I would, but.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
All co-sponsors, okay.
I would actually like to be the prime sponsor, no.
Of course you would.
I know you would.
Yeah. Okay, so, thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for that, okay. Continuing on with the agenda, for approval, a minute from the previous meeting, I'll be offering the February 1st. Meeting minutes for passage approval. Onto local laws, Local Law B of 2021 by Ms. Farrell. We were just speaking about that, that's why we had our treasurer here, or have our treasurer here. Okay. Moving on to local law, hell, Mr. Anani's Local Law G of 2018, that was, that went through committee, Mr. Anani, you wanna say anything?
Um, I just want to thank my, my colleagues and also members of the committee, of the planning committee, for moving this out of committee, and just bringing it up to the fore, there's been discussions over the past year about. Providing access to the internet and also the digital divide that exists here, and I'm glad that my colleagues and are willing to act on this important issue, so I just want to thank my colleague for the support on this local law. Thank you.
Thank you, so we'll be moving forward with that, I can't see hands if anyone had any questions or comments, I just, okay, moving on, the next. Item would be local law M. Mr. Conti?
Yeah, so, just to back.
That was planning on the 16th, I know.
Right, but on local law J, do we have an amendment for the next meeting also?
We, did you, did you make changes?
I think we had something, we don't have language yet, but.
Right, we, we had the conversation in the.
Yeah, so there'll be, that will be amended on, at the next meeting, and then it should be ready for passage on March 1.
First, yeah.
On local law. M. Which relates to the emergency demolitions in historic district of policy, that's on a planning committee agenda.
16.
On the 16th, correct, so depending on how that discussion goes. It could be ready, there may be some amendments that grow out of it, I'd like to be able to move it out, but there may be some revisions. And note, the Historic Resources Commission did discuss it at their February 3rd meeting. And they had, planning department had some glitches in uploading the video, but that's just been uploaded, so I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I'll be looking at that also. So, you know, depending on the discussion, we might be able to. Move something or amend at the next meeting, and then there's the accompanying ordinance that we'll get to later.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
But I will say that the, the last committee discussion we had was very positive.
Okay, next on ordinances. Held. We've got ordinance 21. 9220, but also by Mr. Conti.
Right, and this is a company used to vote on law, and again, depending on how that committee meeting goes. I'm hopeful that will have something.
Yes. Thank you. Depending, the planning, y'all coming to planning meeting on the 16th. Okay, next on to. Resolutions. Introduced. Okay, that's Mr. Conti. 172221, you wanna?
Yeah, so. This actually. Is a resolution that the prior council passed. Back in 2008. And it would, it asks for an amendment to the public authorities law related to the Albany Water Board and Water Finance Agency, to provide that the mayor's appointments to those boards be subject to council confirmation. Because it's a state-created board, it would require action by the state legislature. I'll note that in terms of other state boards, such as the parking authority and also the convention center authority, we do have confirmation authority for those appointments, so it's trying to catch of one real remaining state authority that we don't have confirmation authority. And of course, we directly appoint to the IDA. So again, this did pass back in 2008, was sent to our legislative reps, at the time it was, assembly members were Jack McNinnan and Ron Canisteri. Mayor Jennings was the mayor. It was, there was no action, we also sent them a draft bill as well. So I think I'd like to try to, you know, take a stab at it again, we have different assembly members, and see what happens. So it did pass unanimously last time, it's pretty straightforward, so if everyone's okay, I'd like to try to pass it on. Thursday next, not this Thursday, on the 18th.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conti. Okay, next is a resolution for reappointment of Jeff Sperry, as a member of the parking authority. Has he been before? He hasn't, right, okay, he's got it, so I'll refer to planning. To have a conversation with him. Before the, the reappointment. That'll be by Ms. Fahey. Going to planning.
Do we have a data, do we have a date on that yet, Michelle?
Yes, he's coming on the 3rd of March.
Okay, so planning committee can plan on that day, March 3rd.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, we added, we added it to an agenda. Alright, thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Hoey, Resolution 192221R, Mr. Hoey?
Yeah, um, there's along the books of Albany, and from what I'm hearing from some old timers, it was put in by Corning back with, when the Times Union had a big strike, because they used to be located downtown Albany, and they passed this law, and I guess the strike ended, but it ended up the Times Union moved out of Albany, they moved to Colony, and that's where they're headquartered now. Anyhow, this, this law has been on the books, we all know that it's been over almost two and a half years, I believe, the contract for the nurses, they have not gotten any raises. There's no movement there, and you know, I can argue the point, you know, Albany Med is not starving for money. It's Albany Med and St. Peter's bought up every hospital in our area, when I had my surgery done up in Saratoga, that hospital's owned by Albany Med, so. What's funny is a lot of these hospitals that they bought up do have unions, and they, they work out quite well, and I've talked to some of the nurses from them, and, you know, they're happy to have contracts, and they can depend on a, a raise, as we know, inflation is 2% a year at least, on some things, and some things it's more, if you go to the lumberyard, for example, you know, wood's gone up three times what it used to be. But anyhow, this law is there, I belong to the labor council, this was brought up at the labor council, and I was asked personally, can I follow through with this and see if we can get a resolution out there saying that we'd like to see this enforced, that strike breaking, bringing in somebody to replace the workers who are there is, is wrong, and, you know, it's morally wrong, but in this case, we do have a law out there, and there's a statute saying this is the wrong thing to do. And, you know, what we've heard is that they paid the strike breakers three times the salary that the normal nurses get, they locked, the nurses said they would be out for 24 hours, so it would be the least impact on their patients, and what ended up happening was they locked them out for three days, and they kept these strike breaker nurses in there, who really hadn't had a history with a lot of these patients, so it's just, you know, I hope that we can support this, I don't know if it has to go to committee or what happens, but, you know, I'm bringing it up, there's a law out there, and I, I think we should, you know, try to have it enforced, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoey, Mr. Scotty.
Thank you, and you know, we all, we all support, and we have gone record in terms of supporting nurses and other efforts at Albany Med. I, look, this. I wasn't here when Corning was here, so just to dispel any people who think I've been here that long. But in terms of reading that particular section of the code, I, I, I don't think it applies in this situation. And it, it seems to apply to a situation where there's an act, where there is a ongoing strike, there's an active attempt by management to recruit. Replacement workers from agencies that specialize in recruiting replacement workers. And it, it just, you know, in terms of the one-day strike that the nurses did at Albany Med. It was pre-announced as a one-day strike, you know, there are some issues maybe about whether, and what, whether the, the hospital had to have these contract nurses on for longer than one day or not, but at the same time, there was an obligation for the hospital to maintain staffing levels during that one day, and to, to assure that for, for quality of care and patient care, but I, I just don't, you know, I don't see that section of the code. Applying to what happened that day, in that particular situation, and I think this, this section of the code was really meant to deal with a longer-term strike, where there was an active effort to bring in replacement workers to, to break a union. And again, I mean, we're all on record in supporting the nurses, etc., I, I just don't see this as applying, and, I mean, there is some language in here also that I wouldn't feel comfortable with, like releasing the names of all of the, the replacement nurses, the dresses, and some of the things in there, so I'm not. I don't feel comfortable with it, and I don't think that particular section of the code relates to this situation, that's just my thoughts.
Mr. Igo?
Yes, I have the same sentiments as Richard does, and I was around when Corning was here, and I was a paper boy. And there was a strike back then, my father was a big union man, and I didn't know any better, and I was selling newspapers on the street, my father was always very lenient to me, but boy, he raised holy hell with me back then, and so I'm still a union man, and I, with the, with the nurses and everything here, but. I agree that this isn't, it's got some problems with it, and sometimes it could be written for something else, a separate thing, I mean, if there's a pandemic, okay, and you don't have enough nurses, and some go on strike, what is the head of the hospital supposed to do? Confined and thrown into jail, just the way, I don't know, it just doesn't sit too good with me, but. Just letting my feelings be known.
Mr. Ballerin?
Thank you, um, I, I, I think this is a way for us to. Do some old wars, when, you know, unions are way out of poverty. A union is a first step for get a job that you have upward mobility, so the fact that unions for the last several decades, and it's not just this one specific issue, but for decades, they've been under attacks, and they've been weakened, and weakened, and weakened. I, I, if I, I'm in support of this, I'm okay with, and if the. If Councilman Hoey is okay with removing the language about people's adversaries, you know, I don't think we, we, we need that, but I'm, I think it's important for us to take a stand with one of our biggest employers, and say we're not afraid of one of our biggest employers, that if you, you know, step beyond the guidelines that are set forth. Then, you know, there are consequences. And I think we should be ready for that, I don't think, I. It, it's not just the one-day strikes that they brought people in, it's the fact that they pushed people out for three days, they didn't let people go back to work for three days, so it's not just that one day that they, they, they wanted to, you know, keep So it's not just that one day that they, they, they wanted to, you know, keep the hospital going. It's that they wanted to humiliate uh and show their strength by not allowing the nurses to return back for three days. So that to me is the bigger issue. You know, because if you say you, you wanna, you wanna keep your staffing levels and you need to bring people in, but then you don't let people come back to work, then what you're really trying to do is tell people, oh, if you're going to take a strike again, we're gonna come back even harder at you. So that's why I think uh I support this. I support us sending a message to, again, uh, one of our biggest employers in the city that, you know, you know, you are working with a union and you have to follow guidelines that we expect you to follow. So um, if, if Mr. Hoi is willing to make those amendments, uh, you know, I'm willing to support this.
Um, Mr. O'Brien.
So wouldn't you have to go to the underlying ordinance, the old ordinance, to make those changes, not just in a resolution?
No, let me just speak on that if you don't mind. I was asking, the, the ordinance itself is embedded in the whereas. Um, the resolve to ask for the names and the addresses, the Labor Council asked me to put that in. I didn't feel comfortable putting the names in. But the reasoning is they want to find out where these strike breakers came from. Did they come from Pennsylvania? Did they come from Massachusetts? We don't know. Um, we know they were bussed in. Uh, the building trades were at the hospital. And uh, these buses came in every day and these people got out, you know, between shifts. And the other shift got in and they bust them off. So I mean, this was an organized strike breaking um attempt. And for anybody at this meeting, and you know, this is a public meeting, you know, to say that, you know, this isn't union busting, you're, you're definitely not reading the paper or staying abreast of things. Uh, I, I am a union officer. I know a lot more than the average person, but this is strike breaking. There's no doubt about it. They haven't made a contract with these people in over two and a half years. And they didn't want them to come in as a union. So, you know, are we gonna be Albany the union town? Or are we gonna be, hey, well, once in a while, we're a union town? Thank you.
So uh, will you?
So, so is this ordinance enforceable if it's a hospital and they need to be fully staffed?
Well, Mike, let me jump in real fast. You know, my sister was a nurse and my sister's a nurse. And I know Kelly's
Trying to get Brett on to offer his thoughts. Go ahead, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, but the bottom line is, Mike, there's supervisors there that could jump in. There was other ways and not everybody went on strike. Some of the nurses came in because they keep the staffing level at a, a good place. So you know, there was no talk with the union before this. There was plenty of notice given. So to use COVID or any of this, you know, they made these nurses use a mask for a week when it's supposed to be used once and thrown away. So there's a lot of problems there and I'm sorry, I'll shut up.
Mr. Williams.
Uh, thank you, President Protim. The short answer to Councilmember O'Brien's question is that no, the this, this portion of the code is not enforceable. Um, federal law has said pretty conclusively that um employers have the right to hire strike breakers, employers have the right to um, an almost absolute right to run their businesses, which, you know, uh, in this case involves bringing in strike breakers. Similar laws in other municipalities in the state have been struck down. Um, so effectively, this law is unlawful and unenforceable. It's still on the books. I understand that. Um, but that, that's, that's the short answer to Councilmember O'Brien's question.
Hey, Mr. Mr. Nani.
Um, yeah, I just want to um show my strong support for Councilmember Hoi's uh resolution. Uh, what Albany Med has done to the nurses is quite frankly shameful. It is embarrassing um that they're doing this. It was, we live in a democracy. Uh, the nurses voted to have a union and they want to make sure that they have a fair contract. And quite frankly, Albany Med, what they're continuing to do, even in its times, to get people from all over the country to, to come and take some of these nurses, to replace some of these nurses at three times their amount. It's embarrassing. It's shameful. I actually think Tom Hoi's res- resolution doesn't go far enough. I think we need to put language in there condemning Albany Med executives, condemning Albany Med CEO for allowing this type of behavior to happen. So again, I was, I support uh Councilmember Tom Hoi's resolution as is. I think we need to send a message to Albany Med that we're not, that Albany is a union town. Albany is a union town. And as one of the biggest employers in the city of Albany, if they're treating our nurses like this, others are watching what Albany Med is doing. And I believe, I firmly believe we will win this fight. And when we do, other employers are going to follow suit and pay individuals the wages that they deserve. And more unions are going, more hospitals are going to take unionship. So I just want to say, I, I strongly support Tom Hoi's, Tom Hoi's resolution. And I think we need to act on this to send a clear message that this type of union, uh, union busting is disgusting and this type of behavior will not be tolerated in the city of Albany. Thank you.
Mr. Ellis.
So why don't we just put that language into the resolution rather than having apparently a non-enforceable resolution? Which to me doesn't seem to do a hell of a lot of good for those nurses, but maybe the strong language might be better. I mean, otherwise, I guess we're just showing that we're taking a, we're a plastic bat, I guess, or, you know. Otherwise, I guess it shows that we're just acting out of ignorance. If, maybe it requires a strong message, put that in there, not relying on an ordinance that's gonna collapse. I think that's more of a service to those nurses. Maybe it doesn't give us as much bravado, but maybe it's the right thing to do.
Okay, President Ellis, Ms. Farrell, and Mr. Shea. Yeah, just Brett had mentioned it's been struck down other places for future. When we come up, when corporations and council come to us about things being struck down, can you please provide the cases for us? So I'd like to see those cases that it was struck down. That'd be great. I think that's, that's my only question.
Okay, Ms. Farrell. Would you like me to email that? I have
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, good buddy.
And, and Brett, if you could actually email that to Michelle so they can all look through it, that would, and thank you so much for that. That is absolutely very helpful. Um, I agree, I, I agree with Tom's intent completely. And um, I think Mike brings up a really good point. If it's something that um, as often as sometimes we would love to go against federal law, we unfortunately do not have that ability. And I think it is um, I am, I, I don't love what's happening at Albany Med. I completely support the nurses and I would like to um, do everything we can to push it. I think it's great that Tom is coming up with ideas to do this. If it's not this way, then we should do it a different way. Um, so I, I guess, Tom, I'm here to support you in whatever direction you go in. Um, and I, I appreciate you looking and thinking outside the box to try to really push this forward because it is an important message and we are in a pandemic and what it's important that we back up our unions that are asking for very important things that we as patients, if we go into Albany Med, um, would need, you know, proper PPE, things like that. So I went to St. Peters because I've heard concerns about the care at Albany Med because these things weren't in place, because they were pushing back so much. Is that true? I don't know. I've always had great care there, but um, it's a, it's a much bigger concern. So I appreciate you, Tom, and I'm happy to work with you.
Mr. Shea.
So, um, yes, I support the nurses. Uh, I'm very frustrated with what is happening uh there. Um, and I would like to, you know, have us support them in any way possible. However, essentially, our two whereas clauses are, we're asking the city, the administration to enforce the code and prosecute Albany Medical Center management. And here we go again. Their opinion is that they don't have the authority to do that. Um, so I tend to agree with um Mike O'Brien that um you know, looking at alternative language here might be more forceful and effective. I am uncomfortable um asking for people's names and addresses. Um, and then us having that information, um, then it becomes arguably foilable. And then what responsibility do we take for what happens to those people? Um, normally that wouldn't be a concern, but uh in the last six months, we've seen examples where um uh people have appeared demonstrating outside of people's homes, making people feel very uncomfortable. And um, while I don't have a lot of sympathy for strike breakers, uh, uh, there was a need likely to hire some staff or to cover that one day. Um, so there's a, you know, I'm, I'm having some difficulty uh with that. Um, and I, I think essentially where I'm at at this point is without having a chance to take a look at the federal law and have a discussion about that and the cases that I'm not feeling ready to act on this on, on next Thursday as currently written.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, Mr. Johnson.
I just want to go on record as saying that I support um Tom's uh resolution, but I also think that um we need to send a, a strong message to Albany Med because in my uh three years, I just remember them not wanting to honor the, the handshake agreement. And when I, you know, growing up in Albany, when you look at Albany Med, it seems to be expanding all over the place. So um uh, you know, I, I just always feel like people should be um fairly um compensated and, you know, I'm in full support of the nurses getting uh what they deserve. And I also think that we should send uh, uh, the, the strongest uh message to them. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Frederick.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm supportive of this legislation. I do agree in terms of removing the last uh be it finally, finally resolved with the names and the addresses. I think that could pose some risk to people and their privacy and, and their safety potentially. So would recommend that gets removed.
Thank you. Um, anyone else? Mr. Hoi.
Yeah, so I'll definitely take out the, the names and the addresses. I'll do that. Um, what I'd like to do is put a resolve and maybe, I mean, the first resolve being that the strong language. And then what I'll do is I'll change it that, you know, uh, the council urges the city to enforce this law. So it's not saying you must, but we urge that this law be enforced. If that's cool, I'll work with, um, I'll work that up. I'll give it to you. We can send it out, but hopefully that'll do it for some people.
Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to add that I too support it. Um, I think we should remove the names though. But a- again, whether uh federal law preempted or not, we're expressing our feelings about this. So um, I think that it, that's the point, right? So um, I support this and uh, uh, thank you for putting this together, Mr. Hoi. Anyone else? Okay, so um, that's it for uh, for the agenda. Um, I'd like to uh ask again about, I talked uh a few meetings ago about maybe cleaning up the the agendas and, and members looking through if they have uh, you know, stuff from twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen on the agenda that we're not gonna end up moving and we haven't done anything with for a while to uh, to, to, to take a look at that and consider withdrawing uh their uh legislation. So we can clean this up a little bit. I'd like to add that I would, I want a uh number four under resolutions hell, which is resolution four twelve of twenty. I'm gonna withdraw that. I'll be withdrawing it at our next meeting. Uh, it's the one uh calling on the governor of the state legislature not to cut, to cut Medicaid. Um, so I, I'd ask that members look and, and, you know, take care of anything they have outstanding that we're not gonna do anything with. Uh, I don't know who was first, but there are four people up top. Um, Mr. Shea.
Yes, I thi- I think I was um first chiming in. Um, so I just want to note that there's an MC um that I've asked
Right, oh, you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and my MC is, is twenty point twenty-two point twenty-one R. Uh, this is only for introduction and referral to the Housing Community Development Committee. Um, Michelle is taking care of scheduling some meetings for me. And since normally we act on this resolution, I wanted to make sure it gets in the meeting notice. So I'm not jammed up having to amend the meeting notice uh later on. Um, I do want to know, Brett, I'm sorry. I, I'm realizing that the resolution really only needs to mention March thirty-first as the hearing date. Uh, not the other two dates. The other two dates are, are just meetings and potentially uh, a follow-up. Uh, the April seventh is just there as a placeholder. Uh, but the hearing is actually March, just March thirty-first. So um, I, I'd like to introduce this simply so that we can put it in the meeting notice for my committee.
Thank you. And so with that, also, Mr. O'Brien, your MC, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, twenty-one, you wanna?
Yeah, uh, at the Kana meeting a week ago tonight, um, which I participated in. I think, Richard, you were at that Kana meeting, right? Probably were. Well, anyway, uh, it got Zoom bombed with uh very racially offensive and profane hate speech, to the extent that they had to shut the whole meeting down and then readmit people. And originally, it, it had like seventy-five people participating when uh, and then the rapper Beverly Bartikis was speaking and the, a number of uh bombers came in. I and, and they were absolutely outrageous. So I thought it was appropriate for us to take note of that and condemn it. And I'd like to get past it on the eighteenth.
Thank you uh for that. Um, all members, I, I'd like to think that every member would be a co-sponsor on on Mr. O'Brien's MC. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Ms. Fahey.
Thank you. I just wanted to get an update on the Black History Month celebration. Can we just go over what exactly we're doing? I mean, I know there's different pieces, but if we could, if there's any special timing on, on the videos and all that.
So I received all the deals, um, what, yesterday? Um, every single one, it's right now I'm editing everything and working with special events. Um, we're gonna have a pre-recorded video and it's gonna come live at five-thirty on the seventeenth, the time of the event. Um, it would be similar to the State of the City um video that the mayor did, kind of like, you know, doing a presentational um and having the videos, the pieces that you gave will be inserted into that. Um, we also have performances, music, um, that's in it. We're also gonna do similar, um, sending out a press release like we usually do um the day of the event. And I'll have links to our Facebook and our YouTube, which the video will be posted on.
So that will go to the honorees?
The honorees were submitted, were given. Um, so I was creating the packets. I have certificates printed out like I usually do. Um, that's gonna be mailed to their homes um instead of, you know, giving them in person.
And how about notification of the video?
Of the video, they'll be sent out. I mean, I have the emails too, so
So they'll get that by email?
Yes.
And will they get that at five-thirty or how does that work?
So it's gonna be usually how we send the press release. Um, it's gonna be um usually probably at twelve um when I was sending it, just to get a notification so that people understand when it's gonna be. We created an event um on Facebook, so it's on there too. The public knows when to look out for it. Um, but at twelve, I will most likely send out the press release. Um, but at twelve, I will most likely send out the press release.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
So, Mr. O'Brien, your hand is still up. Are you, were you good with the MC? Okay, uh, Mr. Flynn.
So this is a, uh, this is a video. We don't need to be there. There's no Zoom, just right now.
You do not need to be there. No.
Okay.
Virtual.
Thank you.
Right, so it's virtual, but we'll have all the elements that we would if we were in person, but we're mailing the certificates, but everything's, everyone sent the video in, they're all put together. Uh, and again, like, like the mayor's State of the City, it, you saw how it ran on Facebook as an event and folks can watch it from home safely. So that's the idea. Okay.
Hands is up.
Who?
Mikes.
Yeah, he said he was, he was, alright. Okay, so with that, if uh, no one has anything further, I, we adjourn.
Oh, oh, um, I just want to say the eighteenth is my last day officially. So that's gonna be the last meeting I have with you all. Um, is that why? If I didn't get a chance to call you personally, yes.
Yes, and she's not going far. Um, so, um, but thank you.
Did you go to the mayor's office?
No.
No. No, we can talk about this, this stuff offline. But again, thank you for your service, Michelle. You've taken uh, us to higher heights. Uh, you're, you're, I mean, really, you, you, you've made a lot of changes for us. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna hate to lose you. I mean, you, you anticipate our needs, you're way, like, two steps ahead of us with requests. I mean, it's it's a, it's, you know, we're happy for you. Uh, you're moving on to something better and uh, but uh, don't forget about us, okay?
I mean, let's be real, there's nothing better than us. However, she, you might want to have your nights free and things like that. And we always want added special things for you. Um, but we do deeply appreciate everything you've done for us.
Michelle, you will really be missed. I think you're more than two steps ahead of us. You're like five steps. So it's, you're very big shoes to fill here. Thank you for all you've done.
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues have shared. Michelle, you definitely gotta be missed. Uh, don't forget about us, you know, on your way to the top. And uh, you're, you're always welcome to the council and, you know, reach out to us. Uh, but we're definitely gonna be missed and we appreciate everything that you have done for the council, specifically uh, with the social media and whatnot. Definitely has brought us to the twenty-first century with the county council. Uh, definitely want to commend you for that.
Our Cash App is gonna be in the chat, so if you
Okay, alright.
And I'm gonna make sure he sends something to you too, Michelle. So, Michelle, I just wanted to say thank you for always being patient with me. You know, I'm one of your last second guys. And um, I wish you the best of luck and you can always call back if you need something.
But anyone else?
No, Michelle, we've had our, we've had our nice words and I'm gonna miss you and at least come to our holiday party next year if we're past this COVID, will you?
Yeah, yeah, that would be nice.
I'll still buy you a drink.
Thank you for keeping us on track, Michelle. Thank you. Thank you for keeping us on track and keeping us with so many meetings and so many things going on. Uh, you always, you know, we're good at making sure we knew what was going on. So I appreciated that.
I love the reminders. Thank you so much. You know, you made sure our meetings happened. So thank you again and you will be missed.
JR, I hope you're willing to fill this gap for a little while.
Yeah, we've been working on a plan to, to try to work through that. So, um, okay.
Hey, quick question, Kelly. Just really quick. So the legislation that's um, on the agenda and whatnot, can we, like, before, can we just bring it up for like a floor vote or something like that with some of those? Instead of putting it back in committee for further discussion, like if there's specific ones that we could just make recommendation and bring it in front of the, like, maybe we all set up a special meeting to go over some of uh, these legislations that are stuck in committee and just try to see if that's something that council members would like to move out?
Well, I, I would uh, suggest that uh, I mean, some of this stuff has lied dormant for a while. I would say, re, as the sponsor, talk to the chair of the committee that it's in and work that process. And then if you, you, you agree, you know, the sponsor and the, and the chair agrees and bring it forth and we'll look at it. But uh, things that have gone to committee but not been taken up in committee will not be allowed to move forward.
No, no, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just thinking just forward, moving forward. I know I'm not the only one. I know um, like, probably half of the council stuff is on, you know, been dormant on the agenda. So I just want to, you know, just a suggestion out there that maybe just in the future, you know, maybe towards the end, maybe we, we visit all the legislation that's on agenda at a caucus meeting and just discuss it instead of just one committee, but whatever. I'll talk to you offline.
Yeah, I get, yeah, I get it. And yeah, why don't we talk offline and just kind of run through stuff and we'll, we'll figure that out.
Sounds good.
Just think you can do it. The state legislature doesn't keep reintroducing it every time they get reelected, so.
Right, well, well, you, I'd like to think if you cared enough about it, you, you, you do something with it. So, um, but okay. With that, you, you trying to get on, Mr. Johnson? Okay, alright, uh, I, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Alright, okay. Thanks.